Meeting of the San Juan Unified Board of Education to order. There are two closed session items on tonight's agenda. Student expulsions in two cases, Education Code Section 48918F, collective bargaining matters, discussion with negotiator Daniel Thigpen, Executive Director, Labor Relations and Government Affairs regarding CSEA Chapter 127, General Operations Support, chauffeurs Teamsters Local Number 150, Transportation Supervisors, Teachers and Certificated Supervisory Units, and regarding nonrepresented groups, Management and Confidential Units, Government Code Section 54957.6. We do not have any speaker cards on the closed session agenda items. We will now move into closed session and will return to open session at 6:30 PM. I call the meeting of the San Juan Unified Board of Education back to order. The meeting is being audio and video recorded, and the recording may capture sounds and images of those attending this meeting. The recording will be posted on the district's website. Board meetings are being held in person in the boardroom at the district office, and the community is welcome to attend. The meeting may also be viewed on the district's YouTube channel where it's being live streamed. Please stand for the presentation of colors by the Del Campo High School Air Force Junior ROTC. Good evening and welcome. I'm Zima Creason, Board President. To my left is Ms. Pam Costa, Board Vice President. To her left is Mr. Saul Hernandez, Board Clerk. And to his left is Ms. Paula Viesquez and Ms. Tanya Krevcek, Board Members. To my right is Superintendent Melissa Bassinelli. And to her right is Board Administrative Assistant Stephanie Cunningham. Board Member Ben Avi is absent due to a work commitment. Individuals who are attending the meeting in person and would like to offer public comment, we ask that you complete a speaker request card available at the staff table, and you will be called on at the appropriate time during the agenda. Please note that Board Bylaw 9323 limits visitor comments to two minutes per speaker with no more than 30 minutes per single topic. Time will be extended for anyone, any speaker who uses an interpreter. Please note that public comments, including your name, become part of the public record. We are now at Item D, Approval of the Minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes for April 11th?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Viesquez, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Krevcek, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Abstentions?
I abstained due to my absence.
Do you want to turn on your mic and say that?
I abstained due to my absence.
Thank you. The motion passes four zero with one abstention. We are now at Item E1, Recognitions. Tonight, we have one recognition for National Nurses Week and National School Nurse Day. Dr. Kelvin.
Good evening, President Creason, Members of the Board, Superintendent Bassinelli and Ms. Cunningham. The Superintendent is recommending that the Board adopt Resolution Number A424, proclaiming May 6 through 12 as National Nurses Week and May 10 as National School Nurse Day. Here to accept the resolution is School Nurse Ellie Potter. And Program Manager for Student Support Services is Sandra Pitaric.
Superintendent Melissa Bassinelli, Members of the Board. On behalf of the nurses at the San Juan Unified School District, it is my sincere honor to accept this certificate of recognition. As school nurses, we work daily with teachers, staff members, students, and their families to ensure and foster a healthy student population. In many cases, we are the frontline health workers for our students, connecting families with public resources and helping children obtain the services they need. We provide routine vision and hearing exams as well as specialized care for students, some of whom without our support would not be able to safely enjoy school experience that we as a district strike to provide. Again, I want to thank all of you for your recognition and support of our healthcare staff. Our mission, like yours, is to promote a healthy and inclusive learning environment for our students. It is our pleasure to serve the district in meeting this goal. And I would like to present some of the nurses that were able to come tonight to the recognition. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any comments or questions from the Board? Ms. Viesquez.
Thank you for all the work that you all do every day on our campus to protect all of our students and, in particular, the most fragile and vulnerable of our students to ensure that they can get an education and come and join us and be, you know, well-rounded children and cared for. I think this is the best attended recognitions. We might have, there should be four times the number of nurses, but I think we have most of our nurses here. So just wanted to say thanks all for joining us this evening and thank you for the work that you do. It's a very niche role that you play, but it's very, very important. So thanks for all the work that you do and continue to do, particularly coming, I mean, coming off of a pandemic. I know we kind of have all waited for that moment where it gets easier, but I think the reality, in particular in the healthcare sphere, is that you're just dealing with more, right? Because there's so much that kind of went ignored and wasn't addressed that's now surfacing. So thank you very much. Thank you again. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the Board? I just wanted to, it's okay. It's okay, I'll be brief. No, just a note of appreciation. I just want to know, I had the opportunity to talk to many of your, to many of your team members over the last year, year and a half, to get a much better understanding of the work you do, which is intense and it's a lot and it's beyond the super surface level. You do a whole lot and you are appreciated. You are our healthcare workforce and the crisis in the healthcare workforce, we just don't have enough humans to do the job. SJUSD is not immune to that. And so I recognize 100% how much more you're doing every day to serve our students. And it's a hard job, I couldn't do it. So I'm looking at all of you back there and you, seriously, with all appreciation, thank you for all you do.
One more. Thank you again for your continued support of our healthcare services.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number A424 proclaiming the week of May 6 through 12 as National Nurses Week and May 10 as National School Nurse Day?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Costa, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Krevcek, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that was unanimous. We are now at Item E2, High School Student Council Reports. Tonight, we will hear from student representatives from Miraloma High School and Casa Robla Fundamental High School. Welcome, and let's begin with Emma Pham Tran and Claire Contreras from Miraloma.
Good evening, President Creason, Members of the Board, Superintendent Bassinelli and Ms. Cunningham. I am Emma Pham Tran, Miraloma's Associate Student Body President.
And I am Claire Contreras, Miraloma's Associate Student Body Vice President.
We are excited to discuss some of our recent achievements as well as some of our upcoming plans with you all today. To start off, last time we were here, we were in the midst of prepping for Sportsarama, our annual spring class competition. I'm proud to inform you all that we had around 300 participants and over 1,000 attendees for that event on the night of. I would like to especially thank our wonderful Activities Director, Principal, Class Advisor and other support faculty who helped us really put on the event. It couldn't have been possible without them. And we saw the campus come to life with this event, especially after the pandemic. So we really appreciate what our staff, our faculty and what our students have been able to do.
Along with our Gen Ed at Sportsarama, this year we were able to host our first ever ILS class Sportsarama. We had many student volunteers join together to help create a more inclusive Sportsarama for our ILS class, including games that were traditional from our Sportsarama, modified in ways that we can include our ILS class. As President of our Best Buddies Chapter, I'm proud to announce that Miraloma is the first Best Buddies Chapter in the San Juan Unified School District. And Best Buddies is a global organization that promotes social inclusivity for students with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Because we had the highest number of participants, we will be the grand marshal this weekend at the Best Buddies Walk. And we are super excited to announce that with all of these new events, we will be able to continue having more socially inclusive events at our campus.
And on the topic of inclusivity, we recently hosted International Night, which is our version of our open house. So with that, we had over 40 student organizations on our campus come together to put on an event so that our community could partake and kind of get a slice of what Miraloma is all about. And so what those events included was a parade of nations where our students represented their home countries and countries they've learned, of cultures they've learned about here at school by wearing traditional dress such as folklorico skirts, kimonos and henceforth. And so students represented countries in our demonstration of, through the parade of nations. We also had our, an academic demonstration through our Group Four project. So our junior and senior students enrolled in IB Biology, IB Chemistry and IB Physics were grouped together in order to complete a research project on the topic of water this year. And they all worked together to present that there at, for our community at International Night. We also had a series of cultural performances throughout the night, some from many of our beloved organizations such as Taiko, Latinos Unidos and more. They all did wonderful job and we really appreciate the work they've done on our campus. And furthermore, this is a big fundraising event for our campus as well. Our students were really able to kind of look towards the next year and they're able to really plan what they would like to do next and able to raise the funds for that so they can continue their wonderful projects on campus and off campus.
Another big event on our campus was World's Fair. This is an NYPD sophomore event where they got in groups of five to seven students. And with over 25 different booths, we had topics ranging from fashion, astronomy to surgery and street food. These educational skits and interactive presentations were showcased for our entire school to see.
We'd also like to recognize some of our academic teams. And I would like to first recognize Science Olympiad, which was recently held on our campus. Our, one of our newly fresher, younger teams, sophomore junior team placed seventh. And we were really excited to see how our team progresses as they do have a lot of time still at school. Also, our senior science bowl team has also done extremely well this season. They actually will be moving on to Nationals after placing very high recently. And further on that positive note, our National Forestry Challenge Team, which competes in applying and presenting their knowledge on a range of environmental subjects, has placed second and 15th in the state's competition just this past weekend.
Other academic teams that we are extremely proud of are our Speech and Debate Teams, which recently qualified to states, two different national tournaments, and they just sent their largest ever delegation to turn it to the Tournament of Champions. Additionally, our Future Business Leaders of America, FBLA, has a state conference Friday and is sending 56 students to this event. Next, we have our IB Art II Students, which are presenting their bodies of works, which they've worked on for two years at the Sacramento Fine Arts Center this, this week through Saturday. And Saturday, there will be a closing reception, which will include music students showcasing their performance alongside the artists of these bodies of work.
We are also now in that time of year where our students are preparing to end the year with their IB testing sessions. Our students are currently preparing with all their teachers as well as wrapping up any last protocols. We are making sure that our students who are both new to these programs as well as who've done it with some modifications due to the pandemic, understand the procedures and so that everyone has an equal understanding of what is to come and so that our students feel prepared when testing day does arrive.
And alongside recognizing our academic teams, we also want to recognize our spring athletic teams. We have a track meet scheduled tomorrow and this weekend hosted at Miraloma. And our track team has over 70 athletes competing. Our boys volleyball team just made playoffs, which is really awesome following their win at Senior Night last night. We have one swimmer who made sections and so we will be cheering them on as they get there. Finally, our tennis team is first in league and will also be joining our other teams in playoffs.
Now, to wrap up just a little more, this is a time for our students to look forward to the end of year events, especially our juniors and seniors. Recently, we had over 250 attendees at our junior ball. And we are, our seniors are looking forward to having their junior, I mean, their senior event dance this May, on May 20th. And looking even a little bit further to that, some of our clubs are planning, our clubs are, will be participating in what we call Day of the Matador, which we will be bringing back. It will be a day so that our students, a part of these clubs, can prepare for the next year. They can get their clubs registered and make sure that every, all their paperwork is set for the next year as well as recruit new students so that the transition is very clean and smooth coming into this next academic year. Thank you so much for your time, Walter.
Miraloma doing all the things. Thank you for that wonderful report. Questions, comments from the Board, Ms. Krevcek?
What don't you guys do? Thank you so much for the report, it was amazing. I was so impressed. And I kind of feel like you're making up for all the lost time, you know, that you weren't doing anything during COVID and doing all the things. It's amazing. Congratulations to all of the students, to the athletes, to the academics, to the students who participated in all the events and for everyone who put that on. And then I was so pleased to learn about Best Buddies, that's so amazing. I'm so glad you're doing that. Good luck, I hope that grows and you get more involvement from your peers. Just congratulations on everything you guys are doing.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Ms. Viesquez.
Thank you both for the very thorough and comprehensive report. I had a lot of reflections that I wrote down, but I'm going to go ahead and focus my comments on what you opened with, which was the new addition and improvement of Sportsarama, a longstanding tradition at Miraloma. Actually, I got a lot of feedback while it was happening. Both, I follow a lot of the Instagram accounts, but also know a lot of the staff still there. And the significant improvement to Sportsarama with the ILS component, I know it just brought a new life to an already very, very lively event. And honestly, since then, I've spent a lot of time reflecting about how in the 16 years since I've been there, no one tried to make that happen. People might have tried, but no one, I think, pulled it off quite as well as you all did. So congratulations on both that and all of your other wonderful accomplishments and activities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions for the Board? Okay, so I'm going to try to not be redundant, but I have the same thoughts as my colleagues. Just such wonderful notes about Sportsarama and just being inclusive of all and being in community with your full community is huge, right? So thank you so much for your leadership and making that happen and making it a wonderful day. Same with Best Buddies, what a wonderful program. I'm just so appreciative of you sharing about your celebration of culture. Like, there was a lot of that and we need to celebrate each other, right? And celebrate each other's culture, so that's just lovely. And you had me at astronomy and street food, not those in space, like, that's my dream. So next time, I'm going to have to show up for that. So thank you so much for everything that you do. I'm not sure, are we going to, we're probably not going to see you again before the summer, right?
No, unfortunately, this is our last presentation of the year.
Well, we appreciate you and it's been a pleasure to get to know you. And you've done a wonderful job all year. So one more round of applause. And next, we will hear from Dylan Sossido from Casa.
Good evening, President Creason, Members of the Board, Superintendent Bassinelli and Ms. Cunningham. I am Dylan Sossido, Student Body President and Varsity Football Captain at Casa Robla High School. I appreciate the opportunity to represent Casa Robla in this meeting as I have some great things to share tonight. In late February, along with our academic update, I told you about winter sports, the first piece to our Battle of the Classes and our newly established vision statement. Since then, there's been a ton of progress and I'm glad to be able to share with you all tonight. First and foremost, Casa Robla Student Government has received huge interest for enrollments to class next fall. This year in total, we will have held 20 events, six dances and six rallies. I'm sorry, three dances and six rallies. In preparation for the future, my ASB team, joined by JROTC and our counselors, will be taking a trip to our feeding middle schools to spread information to the eighth graders. To give them a real feel, on April 14th, we held ninth grade registration with a Clubs Day look in order to show them what we have to offer. Aside from these events, our Community Intervention Specialist, Ms. Tammy Latino, leads a group called the Link Crew, which helps welcome the incoming ninth grade students to Ram Country with orientation and a tour of campus led by leaders of our student body. This week holds our second annual Battle of the Classes Flag Football Event. This Friday night, from 5:30 to 8:30 PM, 20 students from each class will compete in a seven versus seven flag football tournament to determine who will hold the Casa Cup, leading up to our Senior Send-Off Rally, which will be held in our big gym on Friday, May 26th. In actual varsity sports, Casa's track team has had some crazy success this year. As a team, the boys are undefeated in the GEL and are on slate to win the whole thing this Saturday at Miraloma, as the girls will make their case as well. Senior Teo Camacho has earned invites to some highly prestigious meets, such as the Arcadia and the Stanford Invitational. Joined by Senior Josie Povey, he will also be competing at the CIF Section Meet on May 20th. Casa's baseball and softball have had a tough start to the season with weather permitting play for most of March. Since the sun's picked back up, baseball is three and nine and softball is five and four. Boys volleyball has had a record of six and nine, finishing their season with Senior Night tomorrow night versus Rio Linda. In upcoming events, student government will be holding prom for the junior and senior class on May 13th from 7:30 to 10:00 PM at the Grand in downtown Sacramento, followed by our Senior Send-Off Week, which also includes Senior Awards Signing Day for 10 of our athletes and Senior Sunset from May 22nd to the May 26th. The class of 2023 will then finish off their time in Ram Country with graduation on June 2nd. In academics, our Rams have been on top of it. To start, over 40% of our student body were named to the honor roll for Term Three, which is progress from Term Two. Casa will also have 125 AP test takers in the coming weeks and over 100 students took part in the dual enrollment program with American River College this year. In regards to the wonderful programs that Casa offers, Auto, FFA, SCORE, Avid and Journalism are all in great shape. Last Saturday, Casa Auto held their ninth annual car show with over 200 cars, 15 local vendors and a few field trucks. The event lasted from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, creating a great community event with an estimated attendance of around 500. Casa's SCORE program has 30 seniors taking the SCORE exam, giving them the opportunity to be placed in medical facilities all over Sacramento area directly out of high school. In preparation for the college route out of Casa, the Avid program took 164 students to Chico State's campus last Thursday and will also be taking 106 students on a trip to visit colleges on the California coast at the beginning of May. Ms. Creason's favorite program at Casa, FFA, has been doing great in their preparation for next year, including Farm Cleanup Day and officer elections. This Saturday, they will be holding the event of the year, Goats and Floats. Students and families will be able to drink some root beer floats while handing out, hanging out with our baby goats to help raise money for renovation of the farm. Last but certainly not least, Casa's Rampages Team placed fifth in the Pacemaker 100, which is a competition that ranks the 100 best yearbook programs in the nation from the last 100 years. We are absolutely thrilled for each of our programs and their accomplishments. Thank you all again for the opportunity to represent Casa Robla tonight as we look forward to what's to come, not only for Casa Robla, but for the San Juan School District. Take good care of yourself, be kind to each other and go Rams.
Always a treat to hear it from you. Questions, comments from Mr. Hernandez?
Thank you. Dylan, it's, you've been here for several years now. And every time you come, you light up the room with your smile and your enthusiasm. And so we're going to miss you, my man.
Yes, sir.
We wish you the very, very best in your endeavors and the report that's always upbeat and outstanding for Casas. So to you and your colleagues, we wish you the very best.
Thank you very much, sir, I appreciate that.
Other questions, comments from the Board? You know I do. And in my screen, okay, so, Go to Floats. This is all very, very exciting. Can we please hook up with Ms. Cunningham so I could get all the, I would like to donate and be very involved.
Thank you.
And Go to Floats, that's very, my son, Kate, and actually was just mentioning recently, are we due for a farm visit? I'm like, I think we are, I will make a phone call. That's really exciting. I took a couple more notes, too. I really appreciate the middle school, you know, just reaching out to them. I mean, entering into high school can be so incredibly scary. So getting ahead of that, you know, before the summer and just opening your arms to them, I'm sure it goes a really long way, so it's not quite as scary on your first day, right? That's a wonderful program. And just the academics, the 40% on honor roll, all that AP engagement. I mean, that's huge, you've done a wonderful job. And I know that this is going to be your last presentation with us, too. And same, you've done such a wonderful job. Hope that we continue to see you in community. Please know I stand as a resource to you when you're doing, you know, magical things out there in the world and making the world a better place. So you've done an amazing job in this role and please consider me a resource moving forward.
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate that a lot.
Thank you.
I would like to thank you all for the opportunity to represent Casa Robla in this meetings. As a total of four times in the past three semesters, I have gained great experience and connections. Tonight will be my last time standing here and I appreciate you all for giving me your time and attention in each of my appearances. Thank you so much.
This time of year, when school's about to end, it's a lot. Thank you so much for your reports. It really did touch my heart and I am going to miss all of you and wishing you all the best in your future endeavors and have a great summer, you deserve it. Student voice is incredibly important to the Board and we very much appreciate you taking the time to join us tonight. So thank you again and one more round of applause. We do not have any reports from staff. So we are now at Item E4, Board Appointed District Committees. Tonight, we have a report from the Vice Chair of the Community Advisory Committee for Special Education, Mr. Digman.
Can you hear me? Yeah.
Yep.
Perfect. My name is Ryan Digman. I'm the Vice Chair of the San Juan Unified School District Community Advisory Committee for Special Education. I'm in here in place of our Chair, Daniel Hicks couldn't make it today. So hello, President Creason and Members of the Board and Superintendent Bassinelli. So I am a Vice Chair, as I mentioned, but most importantly, I am a father in this district. I am a room parent in my son's kindergarten class. I'm an advocate for special education and services that our children, 5,700 children in the school district are, you know, entitled to receive. So today, in this role, I'm here to talk about this committee that I joined as a parent to kind of, you know, allow our voices to be heard, I'm at the district level. So CAC, if some of you have not, I'm sad that Mr. Avi is not here because I think you had some questions at a previous board meeting that I had about our committee. But if you haven't heard about us, here's the information. And I apologize because I did not have a lot of time to put this into my own words. So I'm here to present this information. So CAC is written in ed code. We are a committee that is, you know, that is required of the, that is required to be, to occur in the district. Our purpose is, you know, to advise our administration about the Special Education Local Plan, Annual Priorities, Parent Education and other related activities for students with disabilities. We meet each month, we meet, we met every month this year. The only month that we do not meet is typically in July. So we have eight members on our committee. The ed code requires us to all, a majority of us to be parents of children with disabilities. But we also are, you know, have students, we encourage students to join as well as staff members, teachers and other members of our community. You know, we've had a very busy year with a lot of changes occurring in the future months. So we are, we were up until recently governed by the So we are, we were up until recently governed by the Brown Act and we have gone through a transition to now become governed by the Green Act. So we are learning how to, how that changes our interactions with our parents and helps really, you know, allow us to be more engaged with the issues that we're hearing and being able to, you know, interact a lot in a different way. You know, we are moving forward on, you know, trying to really increase discussion and, you know, active involvement of, you know, parents, students and, you know, staff members, you know, that really care about these issues. So we've worked really hard to have this conversation regularly with our special legislation team. And we went really working hard to build a collaborative effort amongst our committee and our, and our, the staff members to really allow the district to really hear the issues that are occurring in our system that are impacting us each and every day. So the increased collaboration has been a lot better this year. We really have worked very hard to elevate our voice and really sit down with the decision makers in this district to really make, you know, a positive change. So one of the main goals in this committee is really serving CAC like in our parents. We are required to really engage our parents. Over the many years as a new parent in this district, I've heard about the struggles that I E Ps have presented, the meetings and, you know, the horror stories. And I joined this committee to help really engage others in this process. And our other committee members are doing the same. We're in the community. We're talking to, about the struggles. We're talking about the issues that are, you know, being, that are occurring in our school sites. Every school site is different. Every struggle is different and we are bringing those to the table. And we are having these conversations to really push the district to really value the things that we're bringing to the table. Because our, as a committee, we are the subject matter experts and we know our children and we know the needs that are not being met and we know the struggles that were existing in just everyday meetings and, and, and in trying to make sure that, you know, our children are receiving the service that they are entitled to receive. So this committee has been very active in, you know, just like creating a lot of different efforts such as better communication between the special education department and families. You know, you'll hire robocalls on a monthly basis. You'll hear an increased visibility of our, of our committee and to, and on our crease involvement as far as making sure that parents are more aware of the workshops and the, and the activities that are happening within the special education department. That's happened because of our voice and I'm really proud of, you know, that because we worked very hard to make sure that that is now put forth in our community. So with that, our committee is created, is made up of multiple different bylaws or multiple different subcommittees such as bylaws updates. I'm sorry, bylaws. We, we have a bylaw subcommittee that has been really working hard to make sure that our community bylaws are up to date. We are now transitioning to a more board-supported bylaw structure and aligning with other board-appointed committees. CAC has been forgotten about over the last couple of years and there really hasn't been a focus, it seems like from a district level on the work that we're actually doing. So we do feel that this is allowing us to be more aligned at the district level. And you guys will start hearing more of really what the concerns that we have are by doing these updates. And I hope that, and I think those bylaws are going to be brought to you shortly in the next board meeting. So, you know, we recently had a You Like the Way, we have a You Like the Way Subcommittee, which we recently put on the You Like the Way Awards, really celebrating individuals that are supporting special education and the, you know, the work that we do. We, Ms Creason and Ms Bassinelli attended. We had our first in-person event in three years, which was amazing. And we had over forty applicants of individuals that we had a review committee that we ended up, you know, choosing and selecting seven individuals to, you know, receive this award. It included individuals from the community, a student, you know, E C E and included and a number of teachers and we were really happy for the success of that event and it was held at El Comino High School, which was amazing. We're coming, we're having a legislation day coming up on May third where we're participating. We're heading, as parents, we're going and we're listening to, you know, the activities that are happening within our, you know, state government impacting special education. And we're just helping to be serving as a voice for our school district community. We've had a membership and outreach subcommittee that has really worked to recruit members. We had three new members join us this year. The structure of the committee and the membership is changing with the bylaws update. So that's going to potentially increase quite a bit. And it's gonna come down to the board members choosing and selecting different individuals to be on this committee with us. So there's a lot of different things going on with that. So another thing, a couple more things is, you know, one of our main goals this year has been to increase communication. As I mentioned before, we currently hear common and recurring topics during our public comments. And often over the last year, it's getting a little bit better that these common and recurring subjects are always having recurring and been talked about for the last several years with no action. So the district seems to be listening to us a little bit more than what they typically have done in the past from our perspective. And we're really trying to ask, ask for actionable solutions and trying to resolve the, the common issues such as, you know, the lack of support at the high school level, you know, better communication, you know, trying not to dismiss parents and students regarding their concerns about the services that they should be entitled to receive. One of the big things is that we need to really focus on inclusion. Inclusion is not a special education service, but a practice that is done through equity work and our students need to be included at the front of the work. And it's really important to be, you know, talking more about the universal design for learning. And this is being something that's being piloted in other schools throughout the district, but we need more district attention to this and we need to be talking about it more and more and more because true inclusion is going to be really embracing this idea. And we also need more teacher buy-in too, because this needs to be, you know, teachers are feeling stressed and, you know, that they don't have enough resources to support our kids. You know, we hear comments that we, you know, can't be inclusive one hundred percent of the time for our son and our kids that really need these services. We rely on teachers to be inclusive, you know, and supportive, you know, a hundred percent of the time. And these are just things that need to, that, that need to be, that CAC has been hearing and we need to make sure that we, you know, have more attention brought to. Lastly, you know, we've been increasing the, like I said, the family parent training. We, you know, are continuing to bring in workshops and support different things. One thing that we did this year was at our CAC meetings each month, the district has, the special education department has now allowed for meet the teams, which is giving parents of children with special needs more of an opportunity to sit down with the special education department before our meetings to have those one-on-one discussions and to really find solutions in the issues that we're experiencing each day. You know, I could talk forever for about all of the things that we're doing, but CAC is a really important group and I'm very happy and thankful for this group. Many of us have joined it because it allows us to have a voice in these issues. But we are really working hard just to, you know, really be that voice for all fifty-seven hundred students, their parents, their caretakers, their grandparents, everything. And, and, you know, the civil rights movements and laws, you know, have really paved the way for, you know, people with disabilities to, you know, really also be included in social justice and make sure that, you know, you know, we have, you know, equitable education, you know, services and, you know, our children are entitled to having these services that every other child, you know, is entitled to receive as well. And, you know, we are excited to continue to engage the board in our committee and the work that we do as we transition into a new structure. We know that there are a few that will be joining us soon. We're very excited about it. If there's anybody that would like to discuss, you know, different things with our group, you know, we'd be happy to meet with you because these are really big issues, like fifty-seven hundred children are really struggling. And it's not just them, it's their families and their parents and their, and everything in between. And we, and this group has really been helpful in just really focusing on issues at hand and really helping to find solutions. So with that, I can go on and I apologize. I just, I didn't have time to put in my own voice. So I'm just trying to think of what else to say. But we're very passionate about this group and I'm thankful that we're able to share with you guys today. And yeah, with that, thank you. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr Digman. Any questions or comments from the board? Ms Kretcheck?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I really appreciate it. You are passionate and you are authentic and I really appreciate you highlighting some of those items that, you know, maybe are not going the way that you want them to, to go. And as a parent, as a advocate caregiver, it's a lot of hats and it's very exhausting. And I just really want to express my appreciation for you being that advocate for your community and for your committee. It's hard and it could be demoralizing and discouraging at times and it seems like you're keeping on and I appreciate that very much. Thank you. I once heard someone say this sentence and I'll share it with you, don't waste your pain. And it really resonated with me and I think in a lot of situations when something's really difficult, we do tend to isolate and just kind of focus on ourselves. But when you do something to advocate for other people who are in similar situations or have experienced what you've experienced, you're not wasting your pain. You're actually making the world better and I really appreciate what you had to say today and just your, all of your efforts. So thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to having you tomorrow at our meeting. So thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the board? Thank you again. Appreciate the comments. Okay, I was going to say that I had the opportunity to serve as the board liaison for special education committee for a couple of years now. And I have really grown in my understanding of what goes into providing the services, what the challenges students, families are facing. And I would say as an advisory committee to the board, it is so helpful to hear specific recommendations from the committee. And so we appreciate it and this is a volunteer position. No one's getting paid for their work on that committee and for hosting You Like the Way and the Legislative Action Day so that there's advocacy at the state level that's beyond, you know, impacts us at the school district level. There's a lot of work that's going into that committee and a lot of heart. So appreciate all you do and taking the time to report out today. Okay, we do not have any reports from employee organizations or other district committees. We are at item E seven, closed session expulsion actions. Mr Hernandez?
The board voted unanimously to accept the Hearings Panel recommendations of one expulsion in case number M fifty-three and to accept as written one stipulated suspended expulsion in case number M fifty-six.
Thank you, Mr Hernandez. We are at item F, visitor comments. I do not believe we have general visitor comments.
We, no, we do not.
I'm sorry?
We do not.
Okay. Thank you. We are at item G, consent calendar. We do have a public comment. So comments are limited to two minutes. The clock on the screen counts down the time. I'm gonna skip the, we cannot comment because, but we are under the Brown Act because it is on the agenda item. Ms Ri, can you please facilitate public comment?
Of course, we have one visitor comment from Catherine Mirage.
Hello, board. I know I got two minutes. All right. I am a special education teacher at Arcade Middle School, but I'm here to talk about G eleven and G twelve, which is about redoing the locker rooms at two high schools. You talk about a boy's locker room and a girl's locker room. We've got an equity department. We've got equity principals. You guys have equity in your policy. We don't have any unisex going in. I don't know what the stalls look like, if they're floor to, if they're ceiling to floor. For safety, like we talked about physical and emotional safety, having fully closed in bathroom and changing stalls, huge part of safety. So I asked that if it's possible in the time that you have for these two particular locker rooms that we consider adding that in because it's a new build anyway. Why not add it in if we're equity based anyway? And if it's too late for these, I ask that you consider for future developments. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment and I believe that concludes speaker comments for this item. Okay. Do any board members wish to remove any items from the consent calendar?
I would like to pull G fifteen.
Okay, is there any others? Is there a motion to approve items G one through G fourteen?
Move that.
Moved by Mr Hernandez. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms Costa. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was you and Ms. I was making sure I wasn't messing up your, your G fifteen. So G fifteen was pulled by Ms Costa. Would you like to speak to that item in the poll?
I was absent due to illness and so I will be abstaining on this item.
Understood. Is there a motion to approve item G fifteen?
So moved.
Moved by Ms, yes, seconded by Mr Hernandez. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I opposed abstentions.
Abstain.
That was four ayes and one abstention. The motion passes. Ms Simlich, I feel like I missed an opportunity. Can I just make a comment about the items that were brought up in public comment? Or is that? Is okay, okay. I check legally to make sure I'm not violating the Brown Act. So I do just want to point out, it's my understanding that by law and by practice that SJUSD does provide gender inclusive locker room space. And so I just wanted to be noted that I do hear that request and it's true. We absolutely need to make sure that all students feel safe and welcome at all parts of our campus, including the locker rooms. So that is my understanding that we're supposed to be providing that space. I know that it has come up at my own child's school site, that there is that space, but I appreciate the comment and I agree that it's important and that's questions I would, I will be asking. Okay, so moving on. We are at item, yeah, we are at, we're, we are at item I one, secondary expanded learning opportunities update. Ms Schnep?
Good evening, President Creason, Superintendent Bassinelli, members of the board and Ms Cunningham. Tonight, our secondary team will be sharing highlights and actions that we are doing to support our students using our expanded learning opportunity funds, also known as ELO. Joining me tonight are Director of Secondary Darren Kitchen, Principal of Miraloma, Cleat Purinton, who is also our ELO coordinator, as well as Bella Vista Intervention Teacher Greg Lambrec. To provide a little context and background, following COVID nineteen, the state allocated funds to provide supplemental instruction and support for targeted students. The approved plan was implemented to support actions that were connected to seven specific strategies and these were directed at our targeted student populations. Decisions on how to best use these funds were identified through local control and these were based on what really met the needs of our students and our school sites. To support our schools, they moved towards making decisions that were implemented through processes and parameters. And these were co-created with our labor leadership teams. And the parameters included identification of targeted students, the expect, the expectation for collaboration and gathering input and the implementation of continuous improvement practices, which really zoomed in on progress monitoring specifically. The secondary ELO plan focused primarily on four critical areas. And these four areas were given resources and our sites were able to determine what was best for their students based on the criteria. First, each site was given an additional full-time teacher to address learning needs in core subject areas. Sites were also given additional funding to address student learning needs. And this funding formula was based on each site's overall enrollment. Next, sites were also given funding to engage in community partnerships. We really wanted to highlight and encourage more community partnerships. Next, sites were also given funding to engage in community partnerships. We really wanted to highlight and encourage more community partnerships. This funding was also based on enrollment. And then finally, to address the specific needs related to student supports in high school, each high school was given an additional full-time teacher for math specifically. We also wanted to highlight three additional areas, which were a flexible schedule, which Darren Kitchen is going to talk about a little bit more in just a few minutes. We provided tutoring for each of our sites in secondary. And then we also created an opportunity for our middle schools with a program program called Where Everyone Belongs. It's called Web. And that's where our eighth graders reach out and peer mentor our sixth grader. So these were three additional actions that we used our ELO funds for. At this time, Darren's going to join me at the podium and talk about flexible sketch.
Sure. Thank you. Good evening. So we're gonna look a little bit at the flexible schedule. As Kristen said, there's thirty minutes of support that's embedded into the school day. Ten of our nineteen secondary schools adopted this flexible schedule opportunity. And some of the feedback from the fields includes the following. Teachers are using this for assessment retakes, makeups, reteaching and intervention intentional interventions. There's opportunities for enrichment activities. Enrichment gives students learning opportunities from teachers so they can use some of their areas of expertise to engage students. Some of the enrichment activities include origami, archery, sewing and counselor-led small groups. Some of the feedback also talks about the having the period during the school day is more equitable and allows for access by all students. In addition to the iReady success, iReady is an online program for reading and math that will help a student's teacher determine a student's needs, personalize their learning and monitor their progress throughout the school year. iReady allows for teachers to meet students where they are and provides data to increase student learning gains. Some of the testimonials that we're hearing, just a couple, is we've seen growth in iReady hired this year as compared to last year, and we're seeing an increase in our math and our reading levels. Regarding additional hiring additional personnel, our sites have made hires in both our core and our elective programs. In addition to that, our schools have worked hard and they have been diligent in identifying their academic or other academic and or social emotional supports at their respective sites. Academic supports have or will include intervention specialists, bilingual instructional assistants, college and career technicians. And all of our sites have adopted either before and or after-school tutoring. For our socials emotional supports, we have social workers, counselors have been hired, school community intervention specialists and campus monitors. So at this time, we'd like to highlight some of the work that's being done around the district. The next portion of our presentation will highlight some of our social emotional supports. Each of our sites have very different needs. We have a video that highlights three schools and three school employees that are doing remarkable social emotional work for students, families and staff.
I'm one of the school community intervention assistants here at Encina High School.
I'm a school social worker at Casa Ruba High School.
I'm actually a school counselor here at Barrett Middle School.
Besides coaching, also I do more sleek interventions, mediations, and anything that's to do with conflict. I'm pretty much their lifeline before they go anywhere else, before it gets hectic.
If you have students that understand their emotions and are able to manage them, they're going to be more successful members of the community. They're going to be ready to engage with their teachers at school. SCL is so social emotional learning. It can be done in a classroom. I do it thirty minutes a day for three days out of the week with a group of my students, various students with various topics that vary week to week. And so, for example, we'll talk about depression one week or anxiety one week and, you know, how to how to set goals for ourselves.
I support our students with behavior contracts to promote positive behavior change. A lot of times I will set up meetings with their parents via phone and we go over expectations. It's also to support the teachers as well and the student. And I also support the students academically that are really struggling with Ds and Fs. So I call them in and we go over academic plans. We also talk a lot about the future, about high school and what the expectations will be, and then also what they want to see in their future.
The way my role, I think, supports the school as a whole the most is by having a role that is specific to mental health. Fortunately, I am able to, you know, focus a hundred percent on the mental health needs. It's so vital and it frees up those other, you know, channels of mental health support.
So I come for the community. We get resources. So we find out what kids are need. We don't embarrass them or anything like that. We say, hey, I see we need this. We'll take you over there. You do what you need.
I think that my work definitely is responding to the increased need for social and emotional supports. Since the pandemic, we've seen definitely an increase in students having issues in those areas, especially that, you know, revolve around coping and resiliency. So I'm hoping that my work really impacts that and, you know, through behavior changes and through academic supports that I can help support them better.
We needed some kind of someone to be like looking after families and kids. I saw here was the VPs doing all their work. And they were overwhelmed. They would even ask other staffs to help out to figure out how to do this. And that's the reason why I believe having anyone in this role to help other kids will help our staff are less stressful here, maybe less conflicts.
We have an amazing admin team and an amazing staff here, and I know they work super hard. They are also support to me as well. So we really try to form a team around that, but it would definitely fall to them to, you know, to answer those needs for social and emotional coping. And that's a lot, you know, when they're trying to teach and trying to get things done, that would be an extra burden to them.
One of the greatest ways that my role helps students is it's it gives them a face to mental health, right? I'm who you can go to if you just have, if you're stressed out for whatever reason. If you're having, you know, problems at home, problems at school, if you know that your anxiety is gonna, you know, really blow up at lunch and you want to try to catch it before, just come to my office. So I spent a lot of time in the beginning of the year going into as many classrooms as I could to make sure that the pretty much the entire student body now knows that I'm Mr. Rubin and I'm your school social worker and I'm the person that I'm your mental health person.
Hope that you guys enjoyed highlighting those three unique interventions that have been very successful at those sites. I'm going to share at Miraloma, we also have another unique ELO action. We partnered with an organization called Wellness Together to provide individual and group therapy to our students. Mental Health Services was identified as a need for our students even before COVID. The mental health therapist is at our site four days a week and they typically meet with students for ten to twelve week sessions to work on developing skills based on the need of the student. We found that this tier three support has been extremely valuable over the last year and a half. Another great thing about our partnership with Wellness Together has been their ability to come in and support our staff with professional development around trauma-informed practices. The Wellness Together therapist has a caseload of twenty to twenty-five students at any given time with the option of doing group therapy as well. And so for the last year and a half, we've had a steady waitlist of students wanting these services. Tonight, you're going to see a little bit of data of the work they've done through December of two thousand and twenty-two. They provide another great thing about Wellness Together is they provide data for us twice a year at the mid-year and at the end of the school year. So we're not having to worry about trying to collect this data. The mental health therapist is primarily focused on weekly counseling sessions with individual students. However, as you can see for on the screen there, they also intervene when students are in crisis. And as you can see that they document their work very closely. For examples, specifically showing two hundred and forty different interventions, which include individual and group therapy counseling, communication with families, social emotional learning lessons, going into classrooms and providing presentations to our students. The next slide just shows from August to December, thirty-two students were referred for mental health to a mental health therapist and twenty-seven of those students received services from Wellness Together. And then the last slide to me is the most powerful data that we gathered from Wellness Together. And it's the reason for referral. As you can see from the slide, a majority of our students receiving services are for depression, anxiety. And that really helps us understand what we need to do to support our students in this partnership. And at this time, I'm going to kind of switch gears from talking about Miraloma's ELO actions to my role as ELO secondary coordinator. And going back to where Kristen shared the four key areas of resources that sites are receiving through ELO, the additional one point O FTE for math has been used in a variety of different ways at many sites. Many of the sites have used this to lower class sizes in IM one, allowing teachers to provide more individual support and attention. Del Campo specifically chose to use their one point O to staff combining math modeling and integrated math two on a block schedule. This allows students to take math all year long, allows for more continuity of learning and gives teachers more time to develop skills in those areas. A few of our block schools used the staffing to add additional IM one support classes, targeting students that are behind in math or struggling in math. And the goal was to accelerate their learning, prepare them for success in IM one. And finally, I want to share that San Juan has kind of used a unique model where they hired a math teacher to co-teach. This teacher is not signed any classes. The teacher is able to push in, co-teach, or pull students out that are struggling to provide more targeted intervention in math. And at this time, I'd like to have Greg come on up and share a unique ELO action that's more of an academic focus at Bella Vista High School.
All right. Thank you, Cleet. Hello. Good evening, all members of the board. I've been the intervention specialist at Bella Vista High School for the past two years. Prior before that, I was an English teacher for eight years. My core responsibilities consist of data analysis, helping out with assessment practices, intervention and coaching teachers on how to better support our students, especially through the use of professional learning communities. Tonight, I'm going to highlight some of the academic interventions that we've implemented at Bella Vista over my time there. We currently have over fifty active student tutors. You can see all of them right up there on your screens. Each student tutors for at least two hours each week within the club. And many of our tutors average between three and four hours with some going beyond that. By building our peer tutoring network, last year, we supported two hundred and seventy-three students through before and after-school tutoring in all different subjects. One hundred fifty-four students received push-in tutoring. This is where tutors work directly with students in the classroom itself to be more equitable. And twenty-two students directly benefited from our data-driven integrated math three intervention that we ran. We have the perfect. Of the twenty-two students in the integrated math three intervention, thirteen point six three percent of those students initially earned a C or higher during their first semester of the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Earning a C or higher would make them A through G ready. And for everybody to be aware of that, this means that they're now eligible to attend a CSU or UC depending on admission. We are excited to say that as a result of our intervention by the end of the second semester, sixty-three point six three percent of those students were able to earn a C or higher in their math class. To get these positive results, the intervention math three team incorporated five core components. First, the integrated math three team at Bella Vista is fantastic. They all have common assessments and regularly collaborate within their professional learning community. Second, using common assessment data, we consistently track the mastery of academic standards of all of our students individually. This allows our instruction and practice problems that we tailor and create for the students to be unique to each and every one of them. We also created standard tracking works each which use stickers. Surprisingly enough, even at the high school level, the kids love the stickers, just like elementary school, very fan favorite. Third, our integrated three math teachers created practice worksheets with varying tiers of mastery. So as students were able to gain that mastery, they earned additional stickers and they gained mathematical competency as well as confidence in the work that they were doing. Fourth, our student tutors are heavily involved with the entire process from planning, being aware of the data and of course, running the intervention itself. The final component is regular check-ins with all of our students so we can build connections, provide motivational coaching and implement other social, other social and emotional supports. For our push-in peer tutoring, every day during sixth period, we ensure every single integrated math one course and special education study skills class have student tutors in them each and every day of the week. After surveying our students at the end of the school year, fifty-one point one percent of those students expressed that having those push-in tutors on a regular basis in their classroom helped them better understand the material than they had before. We also asked students as an additional question, if the student tutors made them feel more connected and supported at Bella Vista beyond just the academics. For us, and this was astonishing, twenty-one or excuse me, twenty point seven percent of our students felt more connected to Bella Vista just because the tutors were there being present. They had somebody to bond with and connect with. On behalf of Bella Vista High School, we would like to personally thank all of you on our school board, as well as all of our district office employees for the ELL grant money as it's greatly impacted all of our students on campus. As a result of our work, we have also fostered a positive image of intervention at Bella Vista for both our staff and community. I'll now hand it back over to Cleet.
Thank you, Greg. As we wrap up our presentation tonight, I just wanted to highlight some successes, some challenges and kind of what our next steps are in our work. Successes, you've heard, you've got a chance to see and hear a lot of intervention work. You've got a chance to see opportunities for enrichment and unique learning opportunities that we think have been extremely valuable over the last two years as we return from COVID. Local control is essential. Each of our sites are doing unique actions because we have different needs. And that's been essential for us to utilize these funds and maximize the the work and and the effectiveness of it. And then finally, feedback from staff, students and community. Getting a grant like this does require us to dig in and find out how to best utilize it. And so a lot of the work that we've done have been around listing sessions, community forums. And and that's been allowed us to be more responsive to our student needs. So those have all been great successes for us. Challenges have been the labor market's been very tough the last couple of years. So we've had some sites that have had actions that they've wanted to implement and have they've had a very difficult time hiring people for those positions. And that's kind of stymied some of their efforts. Consistent progress monitoring. As ELO coordinator, I'm working with principals to collect data and to monitor progress, but I've got to be honest, the last two years it's been very challenging. And so a lot of our work has been around social emotional learning needs. And sometimes those those things are harder to progress monitor than than some of the big satellite data that we often collect. As far as next steps, we want to continue to reflect on data, analyze current actions. Does our current actions align with the needs of our students? So that's that continuous cycle of inquiry. We want to continue listing sessions. We've identified that they've been that street data that we call it has been the most successful data that we've been able to gather. And it's allowed us to be very supportive and responsive to our students. And then finally, this process is going to end. The ELO grant is going to expire at the end of twenty-three, twenty-four. And it's really important that we identify high leverage actions that we've seen over the last three years, two to three years that we want to hang on to when this grant expires. So thank you for your time tonight. At this time, we will take any questions that you have.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the report. Any comments, questions from the board? Ms. Yeskes.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I've been looking forward to this item coming back to us for a number of reasons, but at the top of it being that when I do my site visits, this the supports that come from the ELO grant are what I've consistently heard kind of rise to the top in terms of both how sites are getting their challenges met, but also in terms of some kind of anxiety of the system of kind of what happens next. And so first and foremost, just thank you for the thorough presentation and thank you for the video. Thank you for those who are here this evening to support the efforts and thank you, Cleet, as well for your efforts. I know it's probably it's been a big lift, but it's important work. And I will say coming into this, I I don't want to be ready to prioritize, but say we're having this conversation a year from now and I'm just trying to think in my head what of all of these items, you know, how how do you have start to have that conversation? And going into it, honestly, for me, the site allocations of And going into it, honestly, for me, the site allocations of individuals and support individuals is what stood out the most. But through the presentation, I mean, the math just really, really jumped out. And of course, we know that that has been a significant and ongoing challenge. And so that, of course, leaves me with the conclusion that we can't end any of it and we have to continue all of it. But we'll cross that bridge when we get there. I really enjoyed hearing about particularly the peer tutoring piece, and I hadn't even considered this push-in model. That sounds really fantastic and I hope it's working. And I don't know where it came from, but someone offer thanks to whoever came up with it. It certainly sounds effective and it was very helpful to hear it, particularly when I think time and time again, we have seen numbers that come up, say, we're struggling in math, we're struggling in math. It helps to know, it helps to see numbers connect to what we of course know, which is that everybody's working really hard to try to address it. And getting creative is really, really great to see. I do want to know and kind of dig in a little bit more on the challenges piece. And I can certainly pride to appreciate the challenge around the progress monitoring. But not too far into the future, we're going to probably have to start identifying how and what is or is not working and noting that the progress monitoring is a challenge. I'm just curious, what's kind of the thought around really digging into that piece? I don't want to spend a bunch of money figuring out if how we're spending our money works, but at the same time, it's important to be able to evaluate to move forward. So I want to just open the floor to additional thoughts there or see if we need to offer more support there somehow.
You know, Amber Lee and I right now, we're looking at the feedback that we collected through our LCAP listening sessions as well as our specific secondary listening sessions to think about what are the high leverage actions that we want to continue with the Learning Recovery Grant that will begin in 2024-25. So although it's not going to be the same amount of money that we were given for the ELO and the ESAR funds, we really have to look at what are those high leverage actions. And this is something that we will do in partnership with our labor teams, with our feedback and our listening to think about, based on the data, based on the listening sessions, where do we need to move forward with our act? And it's, like you said, so many of these actions are critical right now. So, you know, we will continue to progress monitor next year to really dig into what is needed moving forward. So it's not an easy answer.
I can start to imagine that it might be difficult and just hopefully we'll get an opportunity to sort of hear about how that's going. I would love that if, you know, I would love for it to not be that this is the last ELO report before we visit it next year. I would love to get a little bit more frequent progress. I'm sure it's planned. I'm not suggesting, I don't even know you could have, you know, quarterly updates planned or whatever, but I just want to make sure that the next time we see this, it isn't like this is done and done and done. And I would love more progress updates on it.
You'll continue to receive updates on this item and you'll also receive our plan for continuance with some of these pieces using additional one-time dollars. So we have not fully allocated all of the one-time dollars that we've had. So that's part of the work that Kristen was talking about, that we're identifying those high leverage pieces to see what we can pull into, because as you know, we built a three-year plan. This year is year two, next year is the last year. And so we're looking at continuing some of these pieces into year four and five. We also are looking at where we can map on some of these actions as it relates to our local control accountability plan using supplemental dollars. So there's those pieces in place too. So feedback is a part of the progress monitoring. You heard in the report from staff too. They're also building at the local level, common assessments, other forms of assessment data to really look at progress monitoring and impact of actions too.
That's fantastic. And I'm not at all surprised to hear that there is a plan. I am still grateful for it though. So thank you very much for adding that context and excited to hear too about kind of the common assessment tool at the local level. And my last comment is just, I kind of chuckled at the comment, surprised that people were motivated by stickers. I'm a grown adult. I still love stickers. I will do a lot of things for a rainbow sticker. Thank you very much for the work.
Any other comments, questions from the board? Ms. Costa.
Thank you so much for the work. And as I looked at the activities, I can't imagine not having any of them. So when I hear people talking about their concern about the money's going away and what are we going to do, I really am in the same place because every one of these programs has such promise and is making a difference for the students that they are participating in the program. The reasons for referrals, it was interesting because I read the board report and then I read a national news article. And the percentages were the same nationally as what the reasons for referrals were for these students. And I thought about the comment about it, consistent progress monitoring is difficult with social, emotional, and yes, it is. And for that one child, it doesn't, you don't need a percentage. It made a difference in a child's life that might not still be on this earth because of what they're going through. So I am so grateful for what you're doing. I am going to be speaking out as much as I can to say, we need more of these funds, not less. And we need to be able to reach out to students. The flexible scheduling, I think we started before COVID.
Loosely. It was.
It was loosely piloted, but we codified it as we returned back to in-person learning.
So we may have more data for that, I'm thinking, but maybe not if it was loosely done, but.
Yeah, it was piloted at a couple of schools.
We do have two sites specifically that have been using this. Cassett is one of them and Del Campo. So they have been using this model and that was kind of the genesis for us trying it on in some of our other schools.
It's very exciting. And the peer tutoring, again, I think is something that will make such a difference for our schools. So thank you very much for everybody for the work you're doing.
Any other questions, comments?
Real quick, I just want to express my appreciation for the report. Thank you. I was beginning to think that I was going to actually figure out what ELO was when ELO ended. Because trying to figure out all these pots of money and where everything's coming from and how it all comes together, it's a big task. And I appreciate you illuminating some of the work that you're doing as I've been doing my site visits and also figuring out how unique every site is, their population, their their staffing, their principals, just the physical location of the school and what that looks like. It really makes me appreciate local control. And I like, I appreciate that we have given schools autonomy to develop a solution for what's most important and most pressing at their individual schools. And so I just really appreciate you highlighting that. Really impressive what's happening at Bella Vista and Miraloma. I did really also like that idea of leveraging community partners like at Miraloma and then getting those stats too. So you have a win-win situation there where you can. So just thank you. I really appreciate the information.
Any other comments, questions?
I have a quick, a couple of quick notes. One, I just want to again acknowledge how much time and effort and energy went into spending these dollars. I mean, it was so much, it was like fire hose, right? Feast of famine, famine to feast, you know, really the other way around. Education doesn't get a whole lot of that, right? So I appreciate everything that went into putting these dollars into action for kids because there was a whole lot of planning and implementation very, very fast to use this funding for good work. It also, I just want to uplift, it really provided us an opportunity to try new things and try things that we just never had the resources to try. And so that does leave us with an opportunity to look at what's working, look at what's not, which I know we're doing. And maybe reallocate, maybe, you know, just really have an opportunity to throw noodles along the wall and see what sticks, which we just don't have that opportunity in education ever. I will say, I have always been concerned about the one-time funding. Of course, it was very specific to pandemic responsive recovery efforts, but it addressed so many issues that existed prior to the pandemic. And those issues are not gone. The issue is not solved, it's not dead. So all the one-time dollars that was invested has always been a concern to me because what happens when it all goes away? I have no, no real wisdom on any of that, but it's a continued concern I've had since we started seeing so much one-time dollars. Where do our kids land? So I'm hoping state leaders and others hear school boards and as we're, you know, coming to the end of these dollars and doing some planning, they hear, you know, the impacts, how the real impacts and outcomes to our kids and what it would really mean to take this away at the local level. And I'll end with just saying, I cannot look at the word ELO or ESAR without thinking three ELOs and an ESAR. If you know, you know. Thank you so much for the report. And next, we are at item I two, Site Safety Implement. I'm going to do that again. We are at item I two, Site Safety Implementation Plan Update. Mr. Kamara.
Thank you and good evening. President Crease and members of the board, Superintendent Bassinelli and Ms. Cunningham. On June 14th of 2022, this board committed $10 million for safety measures at our district schools. After that meeting from August 2022 through February of 2023, Safe Schools conducted detailed vulnerability site assessments at every school within the district. On January 10th, the board received a report from Director Mike Jones of Safe Schools talking about the process of looking at the vulnerability assessments and how they gather the data and the information around that. They reported that out to the board again. Also, Director Mike Jones has reported to several of our district committees as well as the Citrus Heights City Council on the studies. And we're at the next phase of that, which would be some of the implementation process of relating to some of those facilities condition assessments. First part of that is we took a look at our current closed-circuit television capabilities. We looked at, you know, what are we capable of right now? Right now, our system really was designed for property and liability purposes. It can be used after the fact to look at specific incidents if they occur. And that information can be used in whatever method or fashion necessary, either for law enforcement or for site administration to deal with some incidents that may have occurred on a site. We want to take a look at our capability right now. All our school sites have many different generations of cameras. We have been replacing those throughout the year through the bond program. We continue to do that. We have a couple of older sites will be replacing our camera systems. But we really need to take a look at what are the capabilities of what we have existing? And then what are the potential opportunities that we might have with a new surveillance system or new closed-circuit television system? Do we shift from property liability as our main focus? And do we start looking into the potential for surveillance before incidents occur? Because the capability of camera systems right now are extremely robust and they have some of these capabilities that may be able to help us with surveillance rather than just a property liability process. We looked at our interior door locking capability. So we did an assessment every, every single school site. We looked at how many of our sites have lockable interior doors, either with a key, a push button, or we have something called panic hardware, which requires an Allen-type wrench to be able to lock the door from the interior. We have been replacing lock sets for years in San Juan with, we have many generations of that. So when you really take a look at our lock set systems and make it easier on teachers to be able to just walk up and push, push a button. Now that's going to take years to accomplish. It's going to take funding to do that. We're looking into what that takes. We're also looking at a second line of defense for some of those sites that have the key lock or the Allen wrench lock, which is called the Lock Block. It's a much easier device rather than fumbling around for a key or an Allen wrench. If you're in the unfortunate circumstance of having to lock down your classroom, this Lock Block can be something that can be utilized very quickly. So I'm going to cover that at the end of the presentation and talk a little bit about purchasing those and installing those. But I am proud to say that our district has a lot of interior locking mechanisms. There's a few schools that have some doors that don't have those lock sets, but those are not classroom doors. Those are some other ancillary doors. We're going to take a look at those and retrofit those out to complete the district 100% to make sure that we can lock our doors from the interior. And so we took a look at those two specific areas and we're working on that. We also looked at our fencing. Our fencing seems to be our biggest opportunity for improvement. We are establishing a phasing plan. We looked at the vulnerability studies of our district. We looked at what bond fencing implementation has already occurred. We have been putting fencing in at some of our, at our school sites. We are also putting fences in on all of our new modernization and new builds. If you visited a school site, a new constructed school site, you'll notice there's one point, single point of access. We have a camera system as well and will be continuing that with all of our new, other new builds as we go on. So I'll go ahead and show what we're doing. So these are what we have completed year-to-date. So if you look to the left of your screen, those are the elementary schools that have been completed. You look to the middle of it with our middle schools, Barrett, Sylvan, and Arden have been completed through modernization projects. Casa Roba, El Camino, and Miraloma have also been completed through modernization efforts. We talk about in-progress or semi-completed. We have, and I'll give you an example, Arlington Elementary School is one of those schools that is semi-completed. They have a frontage area of fencing, but there's still some areas of the site that can be fortified. And so we call that kind of the low-hanging fruit. Arlington would be a very quick and easy and inexpensive to continue that fencing and completely secure Arlington. We know that Coleman's going through a renovation right now, so that fencing will be completed through that renovation. We know Leggett's going through a modernization effort right now, so the fencing will be completed during that modernization. And Marie Mont is also going through a modernization that will get security fencing. We understand that Arcade is under construction right now. Catherine Johnson Middle School is under construction right now, so we'll be completing those fencing projects again with that single point of access. And I talked about semi-completed. Winston Churchill and Will Rogers has fencing, but there's opportunity for improvement and we'll be looking into doing those as well. Bella Vista, one of those, again, partially fenced. Take a little bit of action to go ahead and fully fence Bella Vista. Del Campo, as you noticed, when we put the science wing in, we put full front fencing in, one single point of access. And we just have to complete the rear of Del Campo High School. Encina, we fortified Encina. There is a lot of fencing engaging at Encina. It is going through a modernization process right now. We're programming the site. We'll complete that fencing project with that modernization, new construction effort. San Juan, again, high school has some perimeter fencing, but has an opportunity to improve and go ahead and fortify San Juan with just the limited fencing options. So, board members, this is the list of schools that we have chosen through this process for, to be completed by the 2425 school year. And then the 2526 year, this is the fence list of school options that will be fencing, that will be completed by the 2526 school year. Year-to-date, as I sit up here right now, 25 schools are completed, 11 are either in process or semi-completed. And 32 school sites still need to be completed. At the end of this initiative in 2526, approximately 80% of our schools will be completely fenced in, one point of access entry. We have 22% of schools that will not be fenced. I think after the first year, when we start letting bids, we'll understand exactly what the linear cost will be for fencing. And can we do all of our fencing within that $10 million? I'm confident we can get very close. I just need to understand exactly what the estimates are going to be and where we're going to be after the first year of implementation. I'm thinking about a half a million dollars for the 11 sites that we showed you in the 24252526. And I think we have some room to do the rest of those 20, the 22% within that $10 million budget. If not, we'll be looking for some funding or earmarking some funding either through state matching grant, grant funds that come back to us from other modernization projects to fully complete that, all of the district's fencing projects. So I just want to let the board know that 22% won't be lost. At some point after, we'll understand exactly how much the fencing is going to cost and potentially be able to finish. At some point after, we'll understand exactly how much the fencing is going to cost and potentially be able to finish those like I mentioned. I mentioned purchasing five thousand door lock blocks. That's different quantities for elementary, middle and high school. We'll install those, very easy to install, very easy to use. Even if you have a push button, a key or an Allen wrench, that lock block is very quick. It's a flip of the switch or a foot, foot bit, and that, that door is completely locked down. So you do not have to try to find a key or try to find an Allen wrench or actually try to even push the button. It's very quick, quick and easy. Installing door locking mechanisms for those school sites that I told you that are, that are missing some of those interior lock sets. We'll go ahead and do that. And we're also looking at doing, installing front office electronic access cameras and locking mechanisms. If you've been to Dyer Kelly, Greer, Barrett, we have a ring type camera system to where we control the point of access. When you, when you show up to either volunteer for the school or, or you're in the classroom or sub for the school, you have to come through that point of access. The door can be locked. We can identify you. You can identify your purpose there and you can be rang in. So we can control that point of access with these electronic camera systems at our points of entry. They could either be put on our front office doors or they can be put on our, our, our gates. Because some of our schools, the front office is not the first thing you walk into. You walk through gates, then you get to a front door. So we may be looking at trying to put those ring type camera systems on our gates before you get into the office area. Director Mike Jones is committed to site safety. I won't speak too much about the training around that because I'm not privy to that. That's Mr. Jones's area of expertise. So I'll let him explain that as we continue through this process of what that training looks like. And again, looking at that close a circuit television capability and analyzing what the future upgrades of those camera systems look like. With that, board members, I can take any questions that the board might have.
Thank you for the report. Questions, comments from the board? Ms. Vieskas?
Thank you for, for the report and it's hard for me to just not get a little bit riled up about this topic. First and foremost, I'm very grateful for the work that's being done and that we are controlling what we can control and protecting our students and making our site safe. But I'm going to say something very similar to what I said back in June of two thousand twenty-two. Adopt the resolution that we can throw up as many fences as we want, but that's not going to stop a person with a gun. And I know that the fencing and the cameras and other items are in response to more than just active shooter situations. But I can't help but recall and think about and consider that in December of this past year, the CDC released data that showed that we have the second, a second consecutive year of drops of life expectancy in the U.S. And that it's not because our elders aren't growing older, it's because our babies are not growing old. And you combine that with the fact that our children are not growing old because they are more likely to get gunned down in the street or gunned down at school or gunned down in a grocery store or get done, gunned down at a place of worship. So, um, all that said, I will take this work and be appreciative for it and know that for better or worse, one of the options we have is to fence our schools and hope they don't look like prisons. And constantly recall that one of the first actions I remember taking after becoming a school board member was downloading a police scanner so that I wasn't bugging staff if something bad happened in one of our communities. And know that we will continue to do and control what we can and I will continue to support that while also continuing to support and advocate outside of this room and to those who have control over it, reasonable and common sense gun laws to get wars of weapon, weapons of war off of our streets and out of our communities. Thanks.
Any other comments, questions from the board? Ms. Kretcheck?
Thank you for the information. I have a suggestion. If maybe we can add this as like a progress report, however, in whatever quantity we can, or excuse me, interval we can. I'm okay with it being board communication or just coming. I'd like to see progress towards the locks and the fencing that we're doing. It doesn't always require a presentation, but I'd just like to be in the know of how that's happening. And then I'm going to ask a question. I think I asked it before, but I, I just constantly think about this. So I, I can see the rationale for the fencing, but it seems counterintuitive when the danger is inside sometimes. So it's one of the children. So how does that work? Like, I'm sure we've thought that through, but is there an access point where people can actually leave if they need to, as opposed to staying inside the building?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. All of our fencing and our perimeter fencing requires that we have something called panic hardware. So you have to be able to push out and, and flee if you need to, if you need to flee. So each of our locations that will be designated for as exits will have that capability of just walking out of your classroom, pushing the panic hardware and, and exiting the buildings and as exiting the school site.
The panic hardware is in the classroom. It's not on the fence itself?
It is on the fencing itself on the exteriors. In the classroom, some doors have panic hardware. Some doors just have typical doorknobs or door levers. But on our fencing, if you're talking about exiting your classroom and then exiting the site and fleeing the site, there's, there's that panic hardware on our actual exit gates on all of those, on all of the exits.
Will we update our drills to include exiting via the panic access point in the fencing for students and teachers?
I think it would be no different now than as far as either if you're doing fire drills or threat drills or either a shelter in place or a fleet. I think it would just be, just doing your, the site based training for those types of activities. The door fencing, the doors and the door fencing or the panic hardware is not going to change your path of travel if it's already been established, if that path of travel is for a fire drill or a threat assessment or something.
Thinking more out of elementary school, like if the kids have the wherewithal and then also the physical strength to do that.
They, well, they, you, your panic hardware and your door closer has to meet ADA compliance. So I don't exactly know the amount of pounds of pressure you need to push on it, but it's pretty light for somebody to be able to push that door open, the panic hardware open. I don't remember the exact pressures of that, but it's pretty, pretty light.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah.
Ms. Costa?
Thank you for sending me the data about the number of classrooms without the interior locking and that might be useful for other board members who might be interested in it as well. I, I was actually surprised. I thought it would be much higher than that. So you've done a lot of work in the last few years to make sure that we're addressing the issue of locking classroom doors from the interior. And I'm anxious to see the lock blocks, to see how it works and to see the difference that's going to make in classrooms. As I said to you in my email, I think the CCTV capability is, is important for sites to be able to see what's happening on the grounds in real time. I think will make a difference in security. But I know the cost is, is high and I know it's going to take time, but hopefully that's another thing we can expand. Thank you so much for all that you've done in this area. We've made huge progress and seen the capabilities at Dyer Kelly. If we can do that everywhere, that's going to be an amazing piece for our schools, I think, and for their safety. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you for the, I have a question and a couple of comments.
Yes.
I need to stop leading with, thank you for the report because I noticed everyone starts to take off, so. I'll withhold my thanks until the end. I'm seeing a theme here. Okay. I'll go to start with my question and then I have a couple of thoughts. So I, I thought it was slide five, but I think I wrote down my number wrong. But ultimately, you shared about the assessment process and then the schools that were selected to move forward now with fencing. Can you talk a little bit more about the selection process? Who was involved? How did that come to be that they were selected? Maybe there was a scoring mechanism?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was Mike Jones, Director of Safe Schools, did the threat, the vulnerability assessments, provided the data. It was myself and Superintendent, Superintendent Kern. Superintendent Kern is very familiar with district facilities growing up here. So it was a combination of Mike Jones and the, the vulnerability assessments of statistics, using the statistics for each particular site. It was the sites that are semi-completed. That was the, my part of the process. What are the low hanging fruit, the semi-completed or in process that can be done very quickly and inexpensively? And we also looked at, Superintendent Kern took a look at, from a global position, what, what school sites he thought could, should be looked at. Some of the sensitive sites like Laurel Rough and our, and our special education centers, that was superintendent's input. He really would like to see some of those sites fortified as well. So that's a process we went through, but the majority of that process was through those vulnerability assessments.
So, and I'm sorry, maybe I should know this, but was there a scoring or a mechanism within the assessments that kind of gave us the metrics of how we're making the decisions?
We just ranked them. We didn't do a full-on assessment as, as far as selecting the sites, but we used, like I said, the vulnerability assessments, my knowledge of the school facilities and Superintendent Kern's knowledge of the facilities. Trent has, so if you want to elaborate, Trent, that'd be great.
So as part of that assessment process, each school was given a numerical score based on the factors of that site. So existing fencing, what goes on in that community around that school site, incidents that happened on that school site, times that have happened in the area and on the school site. So yes, there was a whole matrix that resulted in a numerical score. That was the basis for the conversation that then got modified and kind of molded to make sure we took into considerations, specific situations at other sites.
That's really helpful and because I think that's a question, I know it's a question that comes up so much from community and in myself. Like, how do we get to the decision? Because there's so much need. All of our schools need something and we have to start somewhere. So I definitely, I'm thinking about how we ensure that we could tell this to community. You know, so when we get questions about why not my school right now, that we are able to really explain it into a point that it wasn't just a unilateral decision at some department level. Or no, the X, Y and Z happened and we could actually show numbers to. I think it's going to be really helpful. Because I get it, you know, I, more than I, I hate to even put this in the universe and say it out loud, but I'll say it like this. I have spent way too much time with the thought, I hope I get to pick them up. I mean, that thought has crossed my mind more times than I want to even put out in the universe because things happen all the time. And so the next thing happens, sure, hope I get to see them later. And no parent should think that. So I understand that thought as a parent of just, I want to know that when I drop my kid off that they're safe. And so there are good questions that are coming up, that dollars are finite. I know we all wish that we could just do it all right now. And if we had all the dollars to do it, we would. I don't think there would be any pushback anywhere to do that. But being able to explain to folks that here's the plan and how we got there is great. And Mr. Allen, thank you because I think that that's what people want to hear. And so I don't know if there's something we can, something to think about later. Is there, that's, I don't want to say story, but that information, I'll say it like that. That's easy, easily accessible that we could point community to, so it's not us just trying to reiterate it. We could say, no, like, this is how we got here. I don't know what that looks like. I don't presume to know, but I think it'd be really helpful.
Yeah, and I appreciate Mr. Allen elaborating, but that vulnerability assessment was the main tool. And again, my knowledge of the semi-completeds to that we can complete very quickly was part of that process. Just to, just to elaborate just a little bit more.
No, I appreciate it. I really do. Okay. And then I just wanted to make a note about fencing because it's tough because we don't want, it's nice when we were in a time where we can have very open school communities and, you know, it's just a more community feel, but I know for me personally, I feel safer knowing that there is a point of entry, multiple points of exit, but one point of entry, which makes me sad that that's just the life we're living right now, but I for one, it does make me think that we're in a safer spot. That just not everyone can walk on. I know in my school site visits, one of the concerns aren't necessarily the most terrible outcome that I'm just going to stop putting that in the universe. But folks, you know, we're tied to parks and stuff, so people will just walk on in the middle of the day with their dogs. People sadly in mental health crisis show up at our school site, sometimes looking for kids that are there that don't exist. There's things that happen beyond just what was on all of our heads that I refuse to say anymore. So it's sad, but I do think that it will help prevent a lot of trauma that our kids are seeing every day just because of the open access of it all and the potential for harm, you know, with the dogs and just people being around. Okay, so that was fencing. And also just wanted to point out too that implementation is a whole thing because it's my understanding that we do have some security, safety, I should say, security and safety measures in place at school sites. But for whatever reason, I don't presume to know, the intent isn't being implemented. I'll say it like that. I'm trying to be very gentle with how I say that because I don't presume to know all the reasons why. But for example, it's my understanding that we do have new fencing in some areas, but are at some school sites, but the fences are propped open, so they're not really meeting their goal. I know that's just one example of a few things that I've heard. So I just hope, and I know we've discussed this, I think, when Mr. Jones was here, about the plan for implementation and onboarding our school communities. And it's not just staff, it's also, you know, students and families to, we all got to do our part to keep it safe because we, again, could have fences all day, but if they're open, you know, we've defeated our purpose. So that's something that's just a concern I live with. And then just want to say one more thing and I'm going to stop. We have some CBOs doing some really good work in the way of safety and security research and recommendations. And so I hope that we're leaning into that and just looking at the good work that's happening nationwide. And I believe we are. I know that we as a board adopted a resolution from one of the organizations on, again, safety, Her Moms Demand Action, and that's one of many organizations that are looking at how we do things and, you know, how we do things better to keep, keep, keep kids safe. And I know that your team and others do look at a lot of that, but I just want to put that out there. That is one thing I will put out there in the universe is I hope that we're continuing to do that as the, the science and the knowledge just changes and the technology too.
I think there's two things. I think there's the physical safety of the site. That'd be the fencing, camera systems, that type of thing. And I think there's a behavioral component. So if you're talking about doors or gates being left open or site enacted safety plans, I think there's probably opportunity for the behavioral aspect. Keep, you know, are we going to lock our doors permanently, those types of things? So I think there's still some work to do around that. I think we're pretty fortunate to have Director Mike Jones with his background, his experience. He brings a lot to the table when it comes to the site security and behavior, and behavior as well. So I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
I think it's a multi-pronged approach. Physical safety is one portion. I think the behavioral piece needs to be looked at as well. Yeah.
Not just one thing. So I appreciate the approach. Superintendent?
Yeah, I just want to layer in a couple of things. So this report was really focused on the physical safety element. Layering in a little bit around training, I just want to provide a little bit more information related to that and touch on something that's not in this report. So with the training, we, we know that we need to do more training with staff and we also need to ensure that students are trained. When I'm meeting with students, particularly last week, I talked with our students at the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. We talked about safety. One of the pieces that keeps coming up for them is they want to be trained more. So they want to ensure that we have consistency in implementation, not only in the safety practices, but in how we prepare students for what to do in case of an emergency. And so our students are asking us to be more consistent in our implementation of training as well as our implementation of practice. So that will be a focus that we have with staff training moving forward, but also there's a student element and, and they are super loud and clear in terms of what's important to them. And it's important to them to know what to do in case of emergency. And last I want to touch on, in this report, it does not talk to another big piece related to safety and that has to be. And so supervision is an area that we are looking at, student supervision. And we're looking to see how we can fold in some pieces within our local control accountability plan to expand supervision supports. And so that will be something that you will see when the LCAP is brought to the board in June. That will be a piece that we are expanding in response to helping support student safety at our schools.
Thank you for that. It's a heavy topic. Really appreciate all the work and just walking us through it all and answering the questions. So thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Okay, we are at item I three, Technology Services Update. Mr.?
Good evening. Thank you, President Creason, members of the board, Superintendent Bassinelli, Ms. Cunningham. An honor to be here this evening, provide you an update on technology across the district. The Technology Services Department is made up of fifty-one highly skilled and dedicated staff, divided into five unique teams, desktop support, networking and applications, student information services, business support services and application design. We have an annual operating budget of thirteen point five million dollars and support over a hundred thousand devices district wide. Ninety-five percent of our staff works in some form of remote capacity. And this is since 2020. Sixty-one percent of our staff works entirely remote. And the additional 34% work in a hybrid mode of three days onsite and two days remote. While technology is in our name, customer service is at the heart of everything we do. We strive to turn the ordinary into the extraordinary and are guided by four core principles outlined in the book, The Fred Factor. We believe that everyone makes a difference. And at the end of the day, we make a positive or have a negative impact on the ones that we serve. We believe that everything is built on relationships and we look for every interaction as an opportunity to learn more about those we serve and how we can assist them in the educational process. We look for ways to continually create value. We look for ways to fine tune processes, become more efficient and think outside the box and looking for solutions. And lastly, we embrace the idea that every day is a new day, a new opportunity to make our lives and those we encounter better than the day before. But we like to say we do our job as Fred's. Service now is our ticketing system and work order system. The slide highlights some of the performance metrics our team has achieved in resolving issues so far this year. We have an average help desk call rate of 90%. What this means is that anytime a user calls the support desk, they will most likely be speaking to a live person. Our average support ticket resolution rate is no more than three days. We send out a customer survey after resolving every support ticket. We have a survey return rate of around 15% and a customer service satisfaction rating of nearly 99% of those surveys returned. First department I'd really like to look at is our Networking and Applications Team headed by Joe Nagosik. Joe and his team have played a vital role in upgrading our network infrastructure and enhancing our security posture. Particularly important has been his team's diligence in keeping our systems patched and updated amid ever growing cybersecurity threats and targeting school districts nationwide. To defend against ever increasing cybersecurity threats and ransom attacks, we have implemented several new processes and measures on this slide to lessen the likelihood of the district's network and data being breached or compromised. While these measures are good first steps, we must stay vigilant and continue to adapt new to new and growing threats as they emerge. Security is not just an IT responsibility. It is everyone's responsibility. So we've recently launched an online cybersecurity awareness program available to all employees to help safeguard themselves at work and at home. Our next team is the Student Information Systems Team headed by Laura Kanabi. Laura and her staff assist teachers, registers, and site admins with attendance, grading, and scheduling problems on a daily basis, as well as providing support to families using our parent portal. Laura and her team are also performing updates and submissions to the California Longitudinal Pupil Achievement Data System, otherwise known as CALPADS, which stores student assessment information and drives district funding measures. A couple of areas I'd like to highlight for her team are the Scan Manager application and the central enrollment automation process that they undertook. The Scan Manager application was created by our SIS vendor, Equitas, with assistance and input from our staff. This application helps manage school tardy policies by using automation or the documentation of attendance codes, behavior records, and parent notifications. As of March, seven of our high schools and one middle school are using Scan Manager application. Mesa Verde Principal Jennifer Peterson reports a 50% reduction in tardies from the previous year. Mariloma Head Staff has stated, the Scan Manager program is so valuable, we would not be able to sustain our efforts of maintaining high expectations of our students without it in place. Additionally, last year San Juan Central moved over off a homegrown enrollment system to one provided by Power School. Laura and her team worked with our SIS vendor to create a process that allows the consumption of enrollment data from the Power School system into our SIS. This also included open enrollment lottery results. This process alleviated the need for central enrollment staff to enter data manually into our student information system. According to Brian Gitner, the Director of Admission and Family Services, the automated process cut SIS data entry in half and reduced enrollment data entry for staff by 80%. Next is our desktop desktop support team headed by Stephen Ramirez. Over the last three years, Stephen and his team have ensured that both students and staff have had working technology available for remote and in-person instruction, all while dealing with multiple COVID-19 outbreaks within his team over the last three years. One of the most important tasks accomplished for his team was the inventory and deployment of over 40,000 Chromebooks last summer to ensure that each campus had enough Chromebooks onsite at the beginning of the school year. The desktop support team also deployed computers to all of our staff under the Computer Replacement Program ahead of schedule two years in a row. Next is our Business Support System headed by Dave Kong. Dave Kong and his team ensure that payroll and accounts payable submissions are processed on time in our existing financial system, while also assisting with dual entry and testing of processes in the implementation of our new financial system. In school year 2223, Dave and his team have processed 389 accounts payable runs and 149 payroll runs. They have logged approximately 500 hours performing QSS to escape data mapping and translation in preparation for the district's migration to its new financial system. Last but not least is Jeff Pham, whose programming skills have allowed us to develop applications for the district that are not available off the shelf readily. Jeff's COVID-19 reporting system and dashboard was the envy of districts across the area during the pandemic. Jeff's development of the new summer school program was crucial in allowing the district to post, screen, and hire for teachers for this year's upcoming summer school. According to Diana Marshall, Program Manager of Human Resources, this would not have been possible without Jeff taking the time to understanding the needs of her staff and those of the site admins running summer school. His latest application he's developed is called the Educational Application Approval Program. It is scheduled for beta testing in early May. The program is designed to help track all software applications purchased throughout the district. It will also ensure applications requested have been approved for use by Technology Services, have had legal review, and have assigned student data privacy agreement in place before being submitted to procurement to purchase. In looking at our large enterprise endeavors, Technology Services is working behind the scenes with the departments across the district and our vendor in migrating and mapping data from our on premise legacy system to the hosted cloud environment, which will help our HR, fiscal, employee benefits, time and attendance, and professional development platforms. This next slide will be a welcome addition to you board members. The week of July 10th, work will commence to replace all audio and visual equipment in the use of the board dais and this meeting room. The systems will be directly integrated with recently procured electronic meeting software called Granicus that the board will be transitioning to in the near future. The Schools and Library Program, otherwise known as E-Rate, is a federal program that provides discounted services on internet access, telecommunications, and related eligible equipment at discounted rates. The level of discount is based upon a district's free and reduced meal eligibility. Currently, our district is at an 80% discount rate. In this E-Rate year cycle, Tech Services has saved the district over a million and a half dollars by applying for discounts on eligible internet services and equipment. Also during the COVID-19 pandemic, the federal government allocated additional fundings known as the Emergency Connectivity Fund Program, or ECF for short. The funds of in this program were intended to help schools and libraries keep students and staffs connected during the COVID-19 health emergency. The funds are one time and would be would cover 100% of any eligible services. Working with our E-Rate consultant, we submitted a proposal to equip the entire bus fleet of the district with mobile internet and data services. I'm proud to say our proposal was approved and we are receiving a total of $615,000 to undertake this project. We will be working with the Transportation Department over the next few months to have the equipment installed and we hope to have all buses equipped prior to the start of the 2324 school year. Currently presenting or mirroring content is done by way of an Apple TV to a smart TV. While this method of content delivery has enhanced learning, it does limit student interaction with the devices and content shown. During discussion with our Facilities Department about technology standards for sites undergoing modernization, we recommended exploring the use of interactive panels on carts. Not only can this technology enhance the learning environment, but reduce costs and provide flexibility for teachers decide where they wish to teach in their classrooms. The panels are equipped with motorized carts, but the screens can be raised or lowered, adapting to staff or students using them and ensuring ADA compliance. Prior to adapting this technology as a standard, we solicited teachers at different school sites and grade levels demo the technology and provide feedback on the impact it had in instruction. The following video here is one of our teachers at Cameron Ranch who was a beta tester and earlier adopter.
The interactive TV has improved the way that I have been able to teach inside the classroom. It's more engaging to the students. It's very versatile with all the platforms that it has. Features on the new line interactive TV that the students love to do is anytime that they get to go up and use it. So if we're just using the whiteboard, they love to change the color of the marker, right? Today I'm pink. Or, oh, can I be the racer for the day? So it allows us to create more different jobs in the classroom for the students to be more engaged with their broad learning. It's very easy to move throughout the room, but newsstand that moves up and down will allow for those littler learners to be able to use the screen, interact with it, and show their learning at heights that benefit them. Having it in my classroom, majority of the year, I've had other teachers from all different grade levels come in. We've done little training sessions with how to use it. The teachers at our site are very excited for these new teammates.
As we close it on on in on the end of the school year, my staff is working with other departments to determine summer school technology needs. We're also planning on the district's smooth start planning, smooth start program to onboard newly hired teachers in beginning of the new school year and also ordering computers for teachers whose units will be reaching the end of life of the five year cycle in the 2324 school year. In the 2223 school year, the district's goal was ensure that every school site had Chromebooks available for use at each campus to match their student enrollment. For the upcoming 2324 school year, we are committing to having a Chrome cart and a class set of Chromebooks in every teacher's classroom across the district. In addition, we will be selecting one school site to serve as a pilot for student checkout program where students will be assigned a device for use at home and at school. In partnership with the district's professional learning and innovation team, we will also be launching an after school esports program next year for elementary and middle school students. Esports is truly an inclusive sport. Teams are composed of students with a wide range of interests, academic achievements, and special needs. Teams may also include students who identify as male, female, or non-binary, playing together, unlike traditional team sports that we have in the district today. Esports promotes academic development and social emotional learning. Esports offers multiple ways for learners to be involved. In addition to being a member of the team playing the sport, students will be involved in aspects such as graphic design, shout casting, broadcasting of the events, and learning about game design and coding. Esports has become a lucrative and well established industry and most successful students can be recruited for college teams with opportunities even for scholarships. So in future years, we hope to expand it to the high school level, while it can be aligned to A to G standards and CTE career pathways. Currently, the district has some 2,000 active hotspots in use at the monthly cost of roughly $40,000 a month. This year, the district is being reimbursed for monthly service fees under the one time ECF program. However, this funding source will expire on June 30th of this year. In looking forward, we have begun exploring the feasibility and the cost of designing and deploying a private LTE for what's considered a long term evolution wireless network that could provide internet service to all staff and students residing in the district's 75 mile geographical boundaries. We would we would be modeling our system after one launch this year by the Natomas Unified School District. Most of the cost would be upfront, associated with installation of towers and radios being placed on buildings around the district. The bandwidth associated with the private LTE network is free and is supplied by the FCC and Department of Defense. All traffic from students and staff connecting to the private LTE network would then be routed back to the district to comply with laws and regulations related to content filtering and data privacy. This time I'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you so much for the report. Questions or comments from the board? Ms. Vieskis?
I want to just say thank you for all of your efforts. You covered a lot of ground here. Appreciate just the flexibility of the department over the last couple of years and all the challenges, but also just appreciate kind of the really bold thinking going ahead as well. There was a lot that I could comment on, but I'm not going to comment on every single thing except to say thanks for the million dollar savings through the E-Rate program. Well done. I'm really excited about the school bus Wi-Fi hotspots piece. It sounds like a little bit more of a short term effort in comparison with the strict wired 25 that you were just discussing. But I just know particularly the Wi-Fi hotspots, I mean, for the students that we transport that it could particularly well as devices get more and more complex and Bluetooth connectivity and all that. I know it could mean a lot to those families and to those students. So thank you for all of that work. My one question is on the Chromebooks and having a Chrome cart in every single classroom. Are we still experiencing a lot of the similar same supply chain delays that we were at?
No, Chromebooks are no longer in short supply.
Great.
And with the textbook adoptions, there's a technology component where we are getting ready after tonight's board meeting to push the button to procure additional Chromebook devices associated with those curriculum adoptions. And so those devices, along with the ones that we already have and the ones that we are collecting from students that had them still checked out during the two years prior, will have enough on stock to supply every teacher with a Chrome cart and ample number of Chromebooks to meet the student needs in the classroom.
That's great. Thank you.
Ms. Costa?
This is actually the second time I've gotten to hear this presentation and I'm even more excited than I was at Curriculum and Standards. But that night Peter brought the interactive panel to the meeting and I I can't wait for our classrooms to have this. I think it is such an outstanding learning tool and I think it will be used so well and ADA compliant in the sense that children in wheelchairs can come up and the screen can be pulled down to for them to work or for small kindergarten kids to be able to do work at the boards. It was really fun and exciting. Every time I hear the 100,000 devices, I think about this department is managing 100,000 pieces of equipment that students and staff who may or may not be technologically literate are using. And they keep things going at an amazing pace. And what I talked about at Curriculum and Standards was the Fred Factor, when I first heard it, I kind of smiled, but seeing it in action, your department really does model outstanding customer service. It, I know personally that I have experienced it, but I hear it from teachers, I hear it from administrators. During COVID times, I heard it from parents who were just so grateful that your department was there and that you were so responsive. And I know it was a heavy lift and and the entire department made sure that our kids kept learning and it's greatly appreciated. So I think the newest thing that I'm most excited about is the LTE network. I hope it happens. It's I hope it happens. It's really an exciting possibility. Thank you for all that you and the department are doing, Peter.
Any other comments, questions?
Just appreciation for all that the department does. Thank you so much for your report. Next item, next item is I Ford Department or just yeah, Department of Toxic Substance Control Preliminary and Intaggerment Assessment for Catherine Johnson Middle School. Staff has requested to pull this item from tonight's agenda and will be brought back at the May ninth board meeting. So we are now at item I five, presentation of the initial bargaining proposal for the California School Employees Association, chapter one twenty-seven successor contract for the twenty-three, twenty, for twenty-three, twenty-four, Mr. Thickepin.
Good evening, President Creason, board members, Superintendent Bassinelli and Ms. Cunningham. I'm here to present CICA's initial proposal for contract negotiations this upcoming year. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. This is the first of a few similar items tonight.
Any comments, questions from the board? Seeing none, this item will come back on May ninth for a public comment. We are at item I six, presentation of the initial bargaining proposal for the San Juan San Juan Supervisors Association Successor Contract twenty-three, twenty-four, Mr. Thickepin.
Thank you. Uh, this is for our Supervisors Association for the upcoming bargaining cycle. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any comments, questions from the board? Seeing none, this item will come back on May ninth for a public comment. We are at item I seven, presentation of the initial bargaining proposal for the San Juan Professional Educators Coalition Successor Contract twenty-three, twenty-four, Mr. Thickepin.
Thank you, Auctioneer Creason. This is the San Juan Professional Educators Coalition uh, contract reopeners for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Comments, question from, comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, this item will come back on May ninth for a public comment. We are at item I eight, presentation of the district's initial, initial bargaining proposal with the San Juan Teachers Association Successor Contract twenty-three, twenty-four, Mr. Thickepin.
Thank you. This is the district's initial proposal um, for the San Juan Teachers Association uh, bargaining cycle for the upcoming school year. Um, so this will come back for action at the next meeting. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Comments, questions? Seeing none, as Mr. Thickepin shared, it will come back on May ninth for a public comment and action. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We are at item J, board reports. Are there any board reports? Mr. Hernandez?
I'd just like to report that I have the opportunity to represent uh, the board this morning at the uh, bus drivers appreciation breakfast lunch and I'm happy to report to my colleagues that uh, we are in good hands. They are good people and we are so grateful to have about a hundred and twenty with drivers and staff and mechanics and uh, in that department. And today was just an appreciation day and I was again honored to be able to represent the board, to represent them. Thank you.
Any other border, board reports? Certain hour comes and then, I don't know, I can't talk anymore. Um, I'm, I had some things to share. There's just been a lot of things going on in the community. It's great to be there. But I do want to formally welcome Ms. Amy Slavinsky to the San Juan Unified Team as our new deputy superintendent. I'm so happy to have you. Welcome to the team. I know it's your first meeting. I should have did this at the beginning of our agenda, um, but it's wonderful to see you over there. So okay, so we are at item K, future agenda. Do any board members wish to add any items to a future agenda? Seeing none, we do not need to return to closed session. We are adjourned.